Everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to call to order the regular public meeting of the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, February 11th, 2025. The Board of Supervisors did meet in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of real estate and litigation. I also want to make a brief announcement. At our regular public meeting on February 25th, the Board of Supervisors will discuss the feedback that was received from the January 30th Open House about the proposed redevelopment of the Spring House Corporate Center at Burkadia, which is the Burkadia site located at 321 Norristown Road. That includes all of the conversation around the office building, the apartment, proposed apartment building, and the proposed retail along Norristown Road. We won't be taking any public comment on that site and that topic tonight. It is scheduled to be on our agenda at our February 25th meeting. I'm going to now open it up to citizen comments and concerns on questions for items not on the agenda.
Hello, this is Bob Beckett.
Hi Bob, can you just state your name and your address?
My address, I live at Levin Richards Way in Lower Gwinnett, Pennsylvania. And I have two business locations, one at 1012 North Bethlehem Pike, and another one at 821 Bethlehem Pike.
Okay Bob, you can go ahead.
Go ahead, for what?
Oh, did you want to have a comment on items not on the agenda?
Well, I'm just calling about this. Yeah, I'm on the agenda for the. At 821, the issue was 821 North Bethlehem Pike.
Okay, so when we get, when we get to that, you can make a comment. This is for comments that are for items not on the agenda. Does anyone have a comment for anything that's not on the agenda? I don't see any, Michelle, is there, is there anyone in the room?
Uh, no, nobody in the room.
Okay. Um, I, if you have the agenda in front of you, I'm just going to reorder it just a little bit so that we can address um, some of the zoning hearing board applications. I'm going to make that the number one topic, the first topic. The Board was going to consider zoning hearing board applications for 1348 Summietown Pike and 821 North Bethlehem Pike, and determine if any action was to be taken. However, this afternoon, we did receive communications from the applicants that they would like both, both of them are requesting a continuance, meaning they will not be on the zoning hearing board's agenda this Thursday. And so, given that we do not know what the potential for the applications would or could be, I'd like to make a motion to table this agenda item. Are there any comments from the Board?
No comments.
Any comments from the public?
Are you saying no action on 1348 Summietown tonight?
Correct, 1348 Summietown and 821 North Bethlehem Pike, did both, both of those applicants did request a continuance, meaning they will not be on the zoning hearing board's agenda for Thursday. So, before us, the Board of Supervisors, and I'll just give everybody a little bit of clarification, because it seems that there might have been some confusion online based upon emails that we received and communications that we received.
Danielle.
Yes.
We, we have a question in the room.
Oh, go ahead.
Sure, just, just, just stand up and just give us your name and I. So, when, when the, when the applicants decide to resubmit their application, or not resubmit, when they, when they decide they want to be before the zoning hearing board, we'll get notice and then we'll put notice on the agenda here, correct Danielle?
Correct.
Right, so the same way in which you received notice this time, you'll receive notice next time.
Well, if, if it's on the zoning hearing board, I think we should let Neil address the issue.
Yeah, it might be easier if our solicitor explained.
I can't really hear him too well, I think he would need the microphone.
So, that, that happens frequently with the zoning hearing board.
Yep.
Their applications are continued. We put them on the agenda, but I understand that people don't check the agendas all the time. I, I, I'm going to let our solicitor explain sort of the process.
Yeah, the applicant gave the township an open-ended waiver, which means the township's under no obligation right now.
Neil, we can't hear you, is your microphone on?
Sorry about that. So, the applicant gave the township an open-ended waiver, we're under no obligation to schedule a hearing until they submit something new, whether it's an amended plan, an amended application. If there is a change in the application or plan, I'm going to require that it be re-advertized and re-noticed, so that everybody's aware of what the changes are and when the hearing will be.
Yep, good, this had a number of significant changes.
Yes.
To Lower Gwinnett Township or zoning and other practices and it's, I mean, obviously, it's something you want to hear from and there should be transparency on it and sufficient notice for people to, you know, comment and have their input, so, thank you.
Yeah, because it will come back to this Board for a decision as to whether to oppose or not. And, and was Danielle going to, can somebody just walk through that process for those that are new, like what happens with, with, in relation to this meeting and then the zoning hearing board meeting?
Yeah, I was just going to kind of give you guys, when someone makes an application to the zoning hearing board, notice does go out to residents that are within a certain geographic distance from the actual site and it is put on the zoning hearing board's agenda. They legally are required to hold a hearing around the fact that the application was submitted. We, as the Board of Supervisors, have the ability to discuss and review the application and determine whether we want to send our solicitor in support or in opposition of an application. And so, that discussion was going to be held tonight related to those two applications, but because, because they decided to continue, we don't know what the actual application is going to look like now. So, it wouldn't make sense for us to vote or have any conversation around that because it most likely will not be the same application that will be put before the zoning hearing board. So, we're continuing, I mean, we're tabling this item until, you know, what they, they did identify what their changes are going to be or determine that they want to move forward with their zoning hearing board application. And at that time, the Board of Supervisors will again review and have a discussion prior to the zoning hearing board's, you know, hearing, and make a determination whether we want to, you know, send our solicitor in support or opposition.
And that, that discussion will be public, it will be held just like this one. And just for everybody's knowledge, the zoning hearing board is a separate, three-person judicial body. They're appointed by the Board of Supervisors, but they act independently. We can, we can do nothing for applications, we can oppose or we can support. So, that's our role in that process.
They have their own separate, they're semi-judicial, they have their own solicitor. So, we, if we want to oppose or support, we have to send the township solicitor.
Could somebody then clarify what the power of the zoning board is? Because my understanding is they can unilaterally do some things. Uh, I, I mean, does the Board of Supervisors have the authority to override them? Uh, can, because I'm, I was actually shocked when I looked into it, the power that they have and what they can do unilaterally. And they're not, they're not elected officials, right? They're appointed by you who are elected officials, but I, I don't think most residents know the power that they have.
Their powers are noted in the zoning ordinance, they're a quasi-judicial board, they're independent of the Board of Supervisors. They do have the ability to approve deviations from the zoning code, whether it's a variance, a special exception. They have the ability to impose conditions if they approve something. They can impose conditions on that approval. Their decisions are appealable to the Court of Common Pleas by any party, including this Board. Uh, so there are circumstances I've seen where a Board of Supervisors has taken an appeal from the action of its own zoning hearing board. Not that unusual.
Is our structure for this similar to the structure of zoning boards throughout Pennsylvania?
Yeah, the structure of zoning hearing boards, with the exception of Philadelphia and Harrisburg, are governed by the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, and every township and borough adheres to that.
Okay, but again, I, I mean, maybe you should consider as a Board of Supervisors uh, educating us as residents about what a zoning board does, who gets appointed, what their powers are, and things like that. Because you say that, yes, it can be overturned by a, an appeal, but, I mean, who has the time or money to appeal these things? I mean, that's very expensive, so, I mean, I, when I, I was shocked, honestly. I was shocked to find out what the power of the zoning board was when I got into a situation recently. And they could unilaterally do a number of things, and it's like, well, these are the rules of the town, the zoning was set for these rules for years ago, and then all of a sudden, for whatever reason, they may like somebody or dislike somebody, and they decide to let them have all sorts of variances and exceptions, and I get that they need to do that, I get their situations when those happen. But I just, I've never seen an authority like this before, I'm not aware of anything like.
Well, there are specific legal standards they're supposed to adhere to in granting a variance or a special exception. And if they deviate from that, that's typically when their decisions are appealable. It's not unique to Lower Gwinnett Township.
I, I know it isn't, but it is, it is, it is a somewhat unique structure in, in our government, where most of us aren't used to this structure. We're used to having a set of rules that we all have to abide by, and if they're challenged, they go to a court. Instead, there's an intermediate agency, which are three people who are appointed by elected officials, but they're unelected officials, who can unilaterally make decisions to change the law and the rules.
That's what Pennsylvania law.
Okay.
Provides for, but yes, I, I understand.
It's treacherous, I would, I would argue.
In educational component, maybe, you know, we'll talk, we'll think about how we can best sort of tell people about it, but again, this is the state law, we don't have any control over how that works.
Well, but, but I do think you do have control in educating people, and I think you have control in in making sure the system works properly as best as it can, and that people are informed. Because most of us don't have the time to do this, you know, most people are working and have children and other activities. And I know you guys, God bless you for doing this.
So do we.
And so do you too, so.
Exactly.
You know, these are important issues, and for instance, the reason I'm here was because of the planned construction or building, you know, which changed a lot on 309 and Summietown there. I mean, there are major changes that are being proposed there, okay? I mean, we're talking about expanding the footprint of a building. I mean, going from two stories to five stories, doubling or tripling the footprint, I mean, the volume there is enormous and uh, at least what was proposed at that, you know, meeting we had the other day. I mean, these are major changes to look and feel and services that we have in the, in the township, so.
Come on back February 25th.
I will, but.
Long conversation about.
Let me just, let me just finish with one thing. I've been through this before, and what people do on the other side is they delay it and they delay it, and then it happens like July 4th, or it happens the day of the high school graduation. So, I just want to put you on notice, I don't want, I don't want to see any of those shenanigans because I've seen them played before on the zoning board. And you're, you're shaking your head and you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, because I've used some of them when I'm on the other side.
Thank you, so, it should, it's not right. And, you know, we all should be involved in these processes and have our word heard, I think, so.
Sir, before you step away from the podium, can you just give us your name and your address for the, for the minute?
I did already, it's Matthew Kylie, I live on 849 Foxfield Road.
Appreciate it, we couldn't hear you. And Mr. Kylie, just, just for your awareness, I wanted to say we did have a zoning hearing board educational session for different community members. Uh, I think last spring we did it in Penland, but it is something that we could offer to, to everyone, if, if everyone is interested.
Um, uh, Neil, I don't know, I don't know if it's the appropriate time, but there does seem to be, he, he referenced the Norristown Road development and the possible rezone. I don't know if we want to just give a little bit of an explanation that rezoning is with the Board of Supervisors, it's not zoning here, they're two different, again, are two different processes.
Yeah, rezoning is changing the underlying zoning classification, that's a legislative act, so it's done by the Board of Supervisors, not by the zoning hearing board. No, they never asked for rezoning, to my knowledge, it was always a zoning hearing board. So, so we're just thought, let's, we're just talking about two different things, right? 1346 Summietown and 821 Bethlehem Pike are issues that are before the zoning hearing board.
Right.
Those are, they're, they're seeking relief from existing zoning. They go before the zoning hearing board. The, the, the property on Norristown Road that you're referring to, that's a zoning change that's being considered by the Board of Supervisors. The zoning hearing board's not addressing that issue, so, to, I guess, allay your concern, the people that were elected will be dealing with the, the Norristown Road issue. Separate issues, separate.
I appreciate that.
Okay, no problem.
No, no, that's really helpful.
That's why we're here.
Honestly, because it gets very confusing. All right, okay, thank you.
If you're really interested, there are some excellent publications out there about these issues. I've written several of them, so if you need anything, just let me know.
And just one more point while we're doing education, my name is Mimi Gleason, I'm the Township Manager. So, the, as has been said a couple of times now, zoning hearing board is a quasi-judicial body. There are rules under state law that we have to follow, including timing. And we cannot ignore that, so if the applicant for either one of these applications comes back in the middle of June and says, all right, I'm ready, I, I've made some changes, I'm, I'm adding a new variance, I'm taking away variant, whatever, to their, their application, I want to be on the next zoning hearing board agenda. And if, if they've met the required timelines for that, Lower Gwinnett Township zoning hearing board and their solicitor has to put that application on the next agenda. If we didn't do that, we would risk that that applicant could then sue the zoning hearing board for a deemed approval. Meaning you didn't meet their procedural requirements by law, I was guaranteed a hearing within a certain period of time, you didn't do it, that application is approved, and a court would find that approved without having held the hearing or anything else, and that's the risk we would be taking. So, what, I just wanted to make sure you understand the township, neither the township nor the zoning hearing board can necessarily control when an application gets on an agenda. The applicant is the one who, who's going to dictate that when they get their paperwork in. So, sometimes our hands are tied with.
Well, actually, the, the state law gives the township up to 60 days in which to schedule a hearing. So, there is, there is some leeway in there.
Some leeway, but we can't just say July and August are bad months, people are away, there's holidays in there, so we're not going to do it. You applicant have to wait till September. Once they get that in, there's, I mean, we have, there's a certain timing before, to allow us to meet all the advertising and, and notice requirements too, that's part of that 60 days. But we can't just tell people they have to wait longer than that, because that would be an inconvenient time for the public. We can't control all of that. That's all I just wanted people to understand, that's not up to us.
I just have one question, Neil, I think you mentioned that if there is any change in the zoning application that was previously scheduled for the zoning hearing board, and then if they come back with a change, it would be re-advertized and neighbors within, whatever the parameters are, 500, is it 500 feet, or would be notified of the hearing? If this developer, for this example, on Summietown Pike, does not change the application at all and just decides he wants to be heard, will those amended notices go out to the public again?
They should, because they've granted an open-ended waiver for scheduling purposes. So, it's not a situation where the zoning hearing board Thursday night can say the application's going to be heard on a specific date. So, it's got to be re-advertized for whatever that new date is.
Okay, thank you.
And you guys publish the documents every, every month anyway on what's going to be discussed in every, every hearing, so you can always check there too.
Uh, there, there is a question online, Dave Keller, if you could just give your name and address.
Absolutely, Dave Keller, 1004 Evans Road. Um, I actually have a procedural question concerning the 1348 Summietown property as it related to how it got onto the zoning hearing board. Um, Mimi, you'd mentioned that there's timing involved, and obviously, you don't want some sort of summary judgment here associated with lawsuits or anything, manager. However, my understanding for this particular application was that the application was received by the township on the 31st of January, and subsequently ended up on the 13th of February zoning hearing board meeting, which left the community scrambling for trying to figure out exactly what this was, you know, what our opinions were on it, whatnot. Um, can the Board of Supervisors speak to why that process was so truncated in this instance to ultimately, you know, able to obviously have opinions heard? But it, it seems kind of disingenuous to say that it could be up to 60 days when, in this particular instance, there were nine business days from the date of application to the date of zoning hearing board, or, or maybe I'm wrong and there's something, I don't know, and that's fine. I was just hoping that the, the Board of Supervisors could speak to that.
I think I can answer that, and that is because they did not change their original application, they simply submitted a new plan. So, the application had not changed or had not been amended, it was just a revised plan that they had submitted.
Okay, a follow-up question to that. Um, no, I guess since there wasn't a date, I mean, is there any procedural requirement for the application to be complete in order to be able to trigger a zoning hearing board? Because that, my fear is that for this particular developer, he's going to walk away and say, hey, it didn't work this time, let me then do an 11th hour, you know, hold the application on file, let me do an 11th hour site plan, right, change one of the lot lines by two feet, and we have to go through this whole process again where there's virtually no time for the community to prepare and, and, you know, God forbid, we don't have an active group of individuals in this like all the time. It is something that cracks, so what mechanism is in place from a township requirement standpoint to prevent developers from doing what just happened?
That's really a zoning hearing board procedural question, but in this case, uh, because we have an open-ended waiver, if the applicant were to submit a revised plan or revised application, there would be a 60-day timeframe in which the zoning hearing board would have to schedule a hearing. Uh, I don't control the zoning hearing board in terms of how they do their scheduling, so that would be an issue for them.
Um, just to add to that, the, the application that we received came in on January 17th, not the 31st.
Okay, I, I apologize for the misunderstanding there. But, but it, and, you know, that, that might be consideration, how does, how does the Board of Supervisors or the zoning hearing board anticipate that the community can stay abreast of what is going on if we allow for developers to submit something within two weeks of when the meeting is actually being heard?
Neil, I don't know, I, I think really what he's getting at is do we have the authority to require, when the application comes back revised, that they have 60 days, or that, 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 that there's an adequate time to notify the public and, and to notify, you know, through the advertisement requirement and to put it on in application so that we could have it in front of the Board also prior to the, the actual hearing date.
Yeah, there will be an opportunity for the Board to review it before the actual zoning hearing so that the Board has ample time to analyze the application and make a decision as to whether the solicitor should be sent in opposition.
In totality, it needs to be 60 days, but it could be shorter, it could be 30 days.
Could be shorter, again, the zoning hearing board controls their own scheduling.
I mean, I think that's as much clarity as we can kind of provide.
I do have another question.
Okay, can you just state your name and, and your address?
Sure, it's Colleen Folia, 207 Cathcart Road.
Yeah.
Uh, my question is actually about the notification process, because I'm kind of seeing in the chat here that it's about 500 feet from the actual location on Summietown Pike that this is projected to be built on. My question is, why, um, why is, why are we not all being notified? Why are not the, all of the Lower Gwinnett residents being notified as I believe it impacts all of us? I would not have heard had it not been for a friend who received her postcard, because she lives in very close proximity. So, I'm just curious what the onus is on the Board to let everyone in the township know this is going on, especially if we had a, you know, as was mentioned, an 11th hour situation where we only have a few days, a week, whatever, because I would have never known about this if not for Whisper Down the Lane.
So, I, I, I'm going to let our solicitor answer officially, but I think that there is a requirement based upon feet, because those individuals could be a party to the actual hearing and, and have party status, which means that they would be able to, to comment and, and do all sorts of other things that other residents quarter wouldn't be able to explicitly do. I think through our advertising of what's on the zoning hearing boards on our website, as well as on what's on our meeting agenda, we're notifying the entirety of the, of the public, of those that are engaged. But I'm going to let our solicitor or Jamie, our, our zoning hearing officer, give us a, a little bit more of a detailed description.
Um, I, I'll let Neil speak to the legality, but, um, the, the, the advertisement for the zoning hearing board is a public advertisement, so it is placed in the paper. Um, and it's placed on our website, it's, and the property itself is posted. The 500 feet is a, that same public notice that is posted in these pa, in the paper and on the website is individually sent to the people that live within 500 feet of the subject parcel. Um, but the entire township is put on notice through the advertisement that's placed in the newspaper, the posting on the property and the posting on the website.
And, and if I could just add on to that again, this is Mimi Gleason, I'm the Township Manager. There are zoning hearing board applications heard pretty much every month. And, and most of them are not of, you know, township-wide interest. It's somebody is putting an addition on their house, and they have an odd-shaped lot, so the addition's going a few feet into the required setback in the, from the property line or something like that. So, it is usually those, that's the vast majority of the applications, and there are things that would be of interest just to neighboring property owners, they would only impact neighboring property owners. The challenge is that, for the most part, we have to follow the same rules for all of these applications. So, um, it, it would be onerous, I, I mean, we couldn't send notices to the entire township every time, it, that would cost thousands of dollars. We, we just did this, sending out postcards for the open house, and because that was bulk mail, it took several weeks for, for that to land in people's mailboxes, and it still costs thousands of dollars, as I said. So, like, we couldn't be doing that every month, it would be cost prohibitive, it would add so much time to the notices being sent out that the property owners who are nearby and most impacted wouldn't get notified. So, that it's, that just logistically would be really tough to pull off that way. And, and that's the reason that the zoning hearing board process is just meant to be, it, it's this judicial process. It's not meant, it doesn't work, it's a little unwieldy that way to be notifying the entire township.
Is there, is there an ability to notify the entire township through an email blast from coming directly from Lower Gwinnett, because I feel with something this substantial um, warrants that? And I might be wrong, but I feel like a lot of community members have no idea this is going on and with traffic and other concerns that I'm sure there are a multitude of that much smarter people have thought about than I have, but that, um, it would be more of an impact than some adding a, an addition that goes 15 feet into somebody else's, towards somebody else's property line.
So the problem, so, so the problem is we don't have everybody's email address in the township. That's the first problem. The second problem is determining what's important, right? I, I, I know that this is important to y'all. But we would have to make that decision each and every time. And to put that, you know, if we, if we thought something wasn't important and y'all did, where do we land there? Or we, or somebody says, stop spamming me. You keep sending me emails. So what we do is, as Jamie said, we have multiple ways of telling people. The completely old school and probably out of date way of putting it in the newspaper. But we put it on our website and our website has a ton of information. And I would commend everyone to go to the website. It's not totally onerous. You can go check it out. It, it is, it is impossible to, you wouldn't want us to make the judgment as to what's important and what's not to send a mailer. And as Mimi said, it would be cost prohibitive to send a mailer for every single zoning hearing board application. So, um, again, we, we, we do advertise this on the website. We've had this issue with the um, Narstown Road property where we had the open house, same thing. This board is very transparent. Everything that we do is on our website. So i- if, 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 if folks have a better way of doing it, we're all ears. Um, but I'm not sure there is a better way. Um, we just don't have everybody's email address.
Is there a way to, you have the email addresses of the people that go onto the Lower Gwinnett website? And check that out. I, in all honesty, I, I'm part of that site. I go on and look fairly regularly, but I feel like there's, that's, that gets buried in a lot of the information. So is there no way to kind of bring it to the forefront so that the people that are?
If you go into zoning hearing board, it's right there. I mean, it's, I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I'm going to respectfully disagree that it's, you know, I don't, the, the term buried. Go into zoning hearing board applications, they're in there. Go into zoning hearing board hearings, it's in there. I mean, it's very easy to find. Um, I, I'm not sure there's a better way to do it. But again, we're certainly receptive to that. Um, but, but the notion that anything is buried on our website, um, I gotta take exception to that because that's not true at all.
Right. I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to offend. I just feel like most people don't re, you know, it doesn't affect most people. Like you said, it's typically somebody's garage going 15 feet over or whatever that is. So I just, you know, personally, I just feel like this is an important issue that will hopefully be addressed a little bit for the broader of an audience than 500 feet away.
Let's see, uh, yes. And if there's a better way to do it, definitely let us know. And it seems like the community is pretty well, um, organized on this. And so I suspect as soon as somebody gets notice, whether on the website or through, um, if they're within the 500 feet and get mail notice, you all will find out because it seems like everybody's sort of is, is tied in with each other. Um, but we do, we have a, we, we have a lot of ways to inform people. But again, if there, if folks think there's a better way, let us know. We'll definitely consider it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie, can you just tell me, um, I know that we send out all of the agenda related to the board supervisor meetings and posted online. Is in our e-blast, are we sending out the zoning hearing board applications notifications in any way?
Uh, we don't email, we don't blast them out. We, in our e-newsletter that comes out every other week, that has the list of upcoming meetings on it. Um, with a link to the meeting page, so it brings you right to where the agendas would be posted. And then if you go on our website, the, the billboard, the scrolling billboard on the top, um, which is frozen right now to just be to alert people that this was a virtual meeting, but on, when it's not, on a typical day, um, the upcoming meetings are, are always listed right there at the top of the page and you can just click on, um, the view the meeting list and then that'll take you to the agendas.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jamie. Any additional questions or comments from the public? Anybody in the room, Michelle? Okay, sounds good. Okay, we're going to move on to our, our first topic. Which is the consideration of our, uh, conditional use application for Lower Gwinnett Little League. Permit two new scoreboards with monstrosity signs to replace two existing scoreboards at Ingersoll Park. Uh, with the board of supervisors did, um, have a hearing in our last meeting. Um, enclosed in the board packet was a memo outlining, um, the con- conditional use recommendation from our board. And, and a potential order enclosed, it indicates the recommendation is for the board supervisors to approve the decision and order as proposed by the Lower Gwinnett Little League used application, conditional use application permitting the replacement of the scoreboard that's presented with the conditions noted in the order. Outlined in the memo are, um, the explicit, um, details as well as in the orders and the findings of fact. Are there any questions from the board? Can't really see you guys so much. Any questions from the board?
No.
Okay. Any questions from the public? I can't really see everybody, Michelle, so let me know if, if there's anybody there.
The, the public is leaving.
Yes.
I mean, we're, unless we're counting the chief and Fred as the public.
Okay. I don't see anybody's hand open online. I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use, um, application and the order. Do I need to, do I need to separate out the order, Neil?
No, it's fine to have a motion as to the entire document.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use decision to approve as well as the order for the, for the Lower Gwinnett Little League scoreboard replacements at Ingersoll Park. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Name? Oh, you were the second. Motion is approved. Motion is approved. Thank you.
That's second and aye, so. All the votes.
All of them. Next up, we have a consideration of resolution 202507. This is the approval of a de-dedication around our cemetery, um, sewer facilities as depicted on the site utilities layout plan. Included in our board packet. It appears that this is dated, um, number 15, 2017, last revisited August 31st, 2018. And this is for the 1325 Gypsy Hill Road subdivision. Are there any questions from the board?
No questions from Jimmy.
Thank you, Jimmy. Any questions from the public?
Not here.
Not here. Don't see any online. Let me just scroll really quickly. Okay, with that, I'd like to make a, a motion to approve resolution number 202507, accepting the dedication of the sewer improvement for 1325 Gypsy Hill Road subdivision 1801. Is there a second?
Second, Jimmy.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Are you like on a delay, Mike?
A delay?
Yeah.
No, just giving everybody a chance to chime in before I do.
Gotcha. Okay.
Strange situation we're in right now.
It is diff- it is different. I'm not sure I like it. Uh, next up is a consideration of historic markers. Um, before us, the historic committee, um, has made recommendations for language related to historic markers, and that was included in the board packet. We have a memo from the township manager outlining a recommended action, which is the inclusion of the text from historic markers recognizing Bethlehem Baptist Church, Gwinnett Corners, the Penland School, Penland Village and the Spring House Village. The historic advisory committee reviewed and finalized the text for the markers for Gwinnett Corners, Penland School, Penland Village and, and Spring House Village. We had previously approved its primary marker for Bethlehem Baptist Church, which is in place by China Grace Church. They're asking us to consider this proposed text as provided for the following markers. Um, so that they, they can reach out to a, um, a shop or a company um, to consider casting the actual text on a permanent marker for each of these sites. Are there any questions from the board?
Um, I have a question for whomever on the board is the liaison for the historic advisory commission or those folks.
That's me, Mike.
I had a feeling it might be. So, um, we're sure that the facts asserted are accurate. I'm not necessarily concerned about the Bethlehem Baptist Church, but they're like the Penland School, the Penland Village, there are some facts in there. I want to make sure that somebody has done the research to ensure that the facts are true because it would be unfortunate if we had this casted and the facts turn out to be inaccurate in some way.
Yeah, so just one clarification. I believe the Bethlehem Baptist Church temporary marker language is not the same as what's being proposed here. The temporary marker language is pretty generic based on my understanding. And I believe the historic committee um, researched this language and the, the, the one that's being proposed for the final cast marker, um. I could be mistaken, but I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure that this was the, the Bethlehem Baptist Church temporary marker is not exactly what appears on our packet.
That's accurate. Oh, so I think, are you talking about our packet or the temporary marker?
Well, so the, the packet memo says that the board already had previously approved the Bethlehem Baptist Church um, language, and I don't, I don't think that that's, um, correct. I don't think we voted on the new updated language, but again, I could be mistaken, but I'm, I thought that the board, um, I thought the historic committee presented all of these together. Um.
Yeah, I think that's it. I think your account is accurate that, that it is different language than what's on the temporary marker.
So, so the board had previously approved the language for Bethlehem Baptist. I didn't know that the historic committee was changing that again while they were changing.
Yeah, I think that's.
That's my mistake.
No, and I didn't catch it on the, on the memo. So, um, just, that's just a point of clarification, but I don't, I don't think it changes, um, because it was, um, the applicant has reviewed it and approved it. And Mike, to answer your question, the committee, um, they themselves performed the research and the, um, there was an, uh, somebody from the historical society, the Whistaken Valley Historical Society, who also, um, vetted the language and ensured, um, that it all kind of read similarly. So it was in a very similar voice. So she was the same person who kind of looked at all of these um, to make sure that, like I said, the voice, the voice is similar, but in terms of historic accuracy, um, the committee, um, this is based on their research.
And, and just to, for all transparency, Janine and I had some involvement with the historic committee. Janine much more than me, but there was an extensive research and, um, documentation and vetting and insurance that this is all historically accurate.
Okay, that's good by me. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the public?
I have one before we go to public.
Go ahead, Tessie.
Um, so has the, besides the meeting that we're having right now, has the public had a chance to see these text and to comment on them?
Other than, other than it being advertised with the meeting, um, no, the, the committee didn't separately advertise anything.
So the public at, at large made, was made aware when the meeting packet was, was circulated and put online, but for individuals that had a vested interest, because they, they also had an application or because they expressed some interest. Um, I think the township manager, Mimi, and correct me if I'm wrong, reached out and shared the language with those parties so that they had awareness of what the, what the proposed language was.
Okay, I, I just would like to know, uh, ensure, uh, that, um, the public, uh, interested public would be able to comment on these before they're put into a sign. Um, not that I mistrust any of the research or the intent, but, uh, these are representing Lower Gwinnett and I think that the public should have an opportunity to comment.
Tessie, a suggestion on how, how we go about doing that. And I, I only ask because I think that the procedure, the historic committee, the procedure they crafted is sort of mimicked off of what the state does, um, and I'm not sure there's something in there with the state like putting it out for public comment. So we would have to create a, a way to do that. And I, other than, um.
But isn't that what this is?
Right, that's what I'm saying. Other than this, I don't know what else to do.
To Tessie's comment, what, what beyond this do you think would be best, Tessie?
So, um, just like the previous, uh, people were commenting that they were concerned that they were not hearing about large developments in the community until word of mouth, and that's not the most efficient way. If we put this into the public domain through the agenda being published last Friday, uh, that gives people basically a couple of days because you consider they may be busy on the weekend to look at this. And then maybe they're also busy with school kids and so forth. So I, I just think it's really unfair to ask people to, you know, um, always have the opportunity to look at the agendas and, uh, and have the time to comment on them. If we were to table this tonight, that would give another, uh, two weeks to let people comment on them. And maybe nobody else would want to comment on these, but I just, um, I think our weakness, uh, as a board sometimes is our, uh, communication skill. Not that it's, not that we're not using all the available routes of communication, but, um, it, it does seem to me that, um, we, we need to give the public a little more opportunity sometimes to, to understand what's going on.
Any comments on the board or Mimi, did you have something you wanted to share?
If the board wants, we could put all of, um, the proposed marker text on our website and in the next e-newsletter. Call attention to it so that more people would be aware, see if there's any comment, and then have it on the next agenda so that there would have been more time for folks if anyone's interested.
That's fine. I mean, that's, that's fine with me.
Jimmy, I agree. I think that that would be a good idea and maybe we can revisit just how we communicate with the public and having some stuff on our website just to make it kind of easier, but we can talk about that another time. But yeah, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I, I really, um, appreciate that.
May I say something? Gloria Jones?
Gloria Jones, you gotta wait one second. You gotta wait one second. I didn't get to the public comment yet. Let Tessie finish the board comment. Go ahead, Tessie.
Uh, yes, sorry Gloria. I, I was just going to comment that one means of communication that we're starting to use, and I think it's really, uh, good is Instagram. And that basically captures one thought in a one-page announcement. And so if you put one thought, like there's gonna be a development, uh, we're giving you a heads up. Or these are historic markers that are, we're proposing to erect. You know, I, I think those are very good, but the weakness is of course is not having everybody's, uh, email address. But, um, we're, I think we're getting much better at communication, but we still, uh, as Jimmy says, we need to maybe think about it a little more. So that's all.
And the, the only thing that I'll add, um, and I don't, I don't have any objection to, to giving, giving this more time. This is the first time we've, we've done this and I want to make sure that we're doing it right. Um, but I know that the, I, I, I know that the historic committee, you know, they, they vetted this amongst the historic society. Um, Gloria Jones wrote the book on Penlin and, and, and had a heavy hand in, in writing these markers. So, um, I know in terms of accuracy, my concern would be, um, in terms of process, what, if we open it up for more comment and we say it should be advertised for a month or whatever process we want to put in place. Um, will it go back to the historic committee? Because I would want them, if the board was considering changing language, I would, I would want to make sure that they know, um, and that they've been able to weigh in because they're the ones who I think, um, we as a board have vetted to, to appoint for the committee and, um, you know, I, I, I trust their judgment implicitly, um. you know, I, I, I trust their judgment implicitly and, and I know they've worked really hard on this. So that's, that's my, my concern. I, I, I want to make sure that we kind of have the right parameters with, with whatever process we ultimately decide.
And just to add before we kind of move forward, I mean, I completely agree that no harm in allowing the public to see and, and be a part to give feedback related to the language that, that the historic committee is, is the advisory committee is putting forward. The concern would be this is contextualized into an accurate historic account of these sites. And so generalized input could deteriorate some of that accuracy and the factual significance around the site. I don't think that there could be more language related to the factual significance of the site that could be shared unless we're now making the marker larger. So there's, there's character limitations, there's factual limitations, and then there's the historic focus of the information we're trying to convey. I don't think that's going to be able to change unless we're now talking about larger markers or reducing, or we're reducing the size of the markers. That's the only drawback, but I believe the awareness that these markers are going to happen and that this is the language that we're putting forward. We could give them, we could give two more weeks without question. I think the concern is then after that period of time, is it just so that a vast majority of people are aware? Or are we then taking additional feedback? Because once we get into that, kind of what Janine was talking about, once we get into the taking additional feedback, it has to re-bevetted for historic accuracy, the factual accuracy, the character limitations, the tone and, and the quality of the information.
And I think they're all valid points. I think really just communicating this is open. I think the standard to change it has to be very high. I don't think, you know, you have to, if you're gonna change a language, it's gotta be, you can't just say I want it, you want it. I, I believe that the people appointed are there for a reason. We have trust in them. It's just to communicate. I think if there's any language change, it's gotta be a high, high standard for that to actually happen. It's just really, I think, opening up for communication. That's all.
Any additional comments from the board? Gloria Jones, do you have a comment?
Uh, yeah.
Can you state your address, ma'am?
I live at 1007 Pershing Road in Penland, PA. We worked very hard in getting the resources for these markers. And we talked to many people who were alive, family members who knew about these resources and previous historians who have written about this area. I don't mind, you know, if, if public people before you make a decisions, but I'm just wondering how much they can really contribute because we went to legitimate resources and insofar as let's say the Penland School is concerned, the people who were involved in that, we talked to them. In fact, my family was involved in it, my sister. You all know Thaddeus Smith and we talked to his daughters. And so I don't know what the general public could really contribute to the information. We all here in, there's so many people in Penland Village who lived through much of the material that we have put in the markers. So I'm just wondering just what we expect from the public other than maybe the language, but as far as the data, I don't know how they could, you know, contribute in that way, but if you have someone who, who can write better than the people who developed the markers, I'd say bring that on. But as far as the statistics, it's all well documented, the newspaper articles and all those kinds of things. So, but I, I, I think the, you know, discussion here is necessary, but I just, just wondering if you put that out to the public, how much they would know without going to our resources to document.
No, thank you for that, Ms. Jones. I think what you're kind of articulating is some of the concerns that we, we highlighted. So I think what we, what is being proposed is potentially just to share this for awareness so that it doesn't seem or, or even alludes to the fact that we're doing this without making sure that everyone has an opportunity to be aware and to read it and to consider it. I think that is what Tessie is kind of proposing, but I could be wrong. And Tessie, you can clarify if I'm, if I'm misrepresenting it.
No, I, I don't anticipate anyone would have a criticism at all, but I don't want to assume that people wouldn't have an interest in knowing about this before the signs were made. So I don't just, you know, I don't discount anybody's research, especially not Gloria's. But I think the public has a right to see this information for a little bit longer than two or three days.
And you're, you're just suggesting that the markers, the wording of the markers be published to the public.
Yes, but just to, I'm not saying anybody in the public has more knowledge than you do.
No, I'm not speaking for my, you know, knowledge. I'm just speaking for, if, if I was part of the public and, you know, didn't have anything to do with this, I would have to go to the resources used by HAC in order to critique except for wording and, and, you know, the skill of people who might write things like that. And I checked with all of the, not all of them, but with several states and how they, you know, or, or what they wanted in terms of resources. In fact, my family in Virginia is just having a marker placed in our family and they didn't have to go through that. And my friend in Georgia, she sent in all her, you know, information, what have you, and the markers. And the public, you know, public needed to be educated to those facts. And so I don't think the public knows very much about the, where the markers will be placed. They might have some problem with where the markers will be placed. But as far as the information, you can, you know, publish it and whatever happens. I don't see how, you know, it would be necessary because I, I checked with other states to see what they expected resources for their markers. And I'm sorry, I, I might not be making much sense right now, but I'm not wearing my glasses and I can't see too well.
You're making sense. Yeah, you're making sense. And, and, and I, I would just say that, you know, I, again, I have no problem publishing it for, for a longer period of time and trying to make sure the public's aware, but I, I agree with, with Ms. Gloria and, and with what Jimmy said, if, if there were any proposed, you know, changes brought forth by the public, I would recommend that if, if the board is to consider those changes, it would have to first be recommended by our historic committee that we, we change it as such. So that, that Ms. Gloria and everybody else who had a hand in writing these would be given the opportunity to, you know, vet the
I, I understand that, but I just had some problem with how the public could know, you know, anything other than, you know, what's on the markers with the resources that we used and some people who are still living who were part of it. So.
Yep, yeah.
It's just
I don't mean to take up your time, but I just had to make a comment.
I, I, I think your comments are all valid in there and this isn't so much for this specific situation, it's just generally for anything that comes down the line in the future. But yeah, I think you made all very valid points and points that we all need to consider.
Tessie, do you want to make the motion?
I make a motion that we table voting on this for, until our next Board of Supervisor meeting to give the public a chance to see the information.
Do you want to give any clarifying, like, in front that is posted on our website?
And the information could be posted on our township website for further public knowledge.
Is there a second?
This is Jimmy, a second. Sorry, I was getting off mute.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you guys. Next up is the consideration of the approval of a licensing agreement for 924 Chesterfield Road, including in our board packet is an outline of the licensing agreement and it's, it's, it's really one of the several locations where there is encroachments on township-owned properties. And we have agreed to allow the encroachments to remain, but we are requiring the each property owner enter into a licensing agreement. This is the licensing agreement and the formal acknowledgement that the encroachment exists and the parameters outlining that licensing agreement for this encroachment. The licensing agreement has been prepared by our township solicitor and circulated to the property owners. Agreement is now before us for consideration. Again, the address is 924. The actual licensing agreement was included in the board packet. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Anybody there, Michelle?
Nope, no one's here.
See any hands? So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the licensing agreement for 924 Chesterfield Drive. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Did I not say aye? Or I thought I seconded it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear Tessie.
I, I'm in favor.
Tessie, did you vote? I didn't hear you.
I said aye.
Okay, thank you so much. Next up is the consideration of a resolution 2025-08. And this is a revision as it relates to the compensation for our tax collector. Included in the board packet is, is a memo from our finance director to our township manager essentially asking for an increase in the duplication of a bill fee from $5 to $10. All other fees and compensation remain unchanged. The PA tax collection law requires that a resolution change the elected tax collector's compensation must be adopted by February 15th of the year of the election for the position, which is this year. No other changes can be made to the tax collector's compensation during the term of office. Included in the board packet is the actual resolution 2025-08 and all of the whereas's and therefor's. Are there any questions from the board?
No questions from Jimmy.
Any questions from the public?
Nothing here.
I don't see anybody online. Let me just scroll to the next page. Okay. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the tax collector resolution for 2025-08 to increase, increase the duplication bill fee from $5 to $10. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you guys. Next up is the consideration for the sidewalk and landscaping of the township-owned property at 900 South Summietown Pike, which was formerly our Texas Road site. Included in the board packet, let me get to it. As a memo from John Farrell, project manager has a recommendation for a work order to include the expenditure of up to $12,000 on grading and soil work, up to $15,000 on planting, up to $12,500 on sidewalk and curbing for a total project budget of 39, 39.5. Outlined in the memo is the recommendation from staff to essentially incorporate native plantings, minimize the maintenance for the public works department and make it more aesthetically pleasing, which is that corner lot kind of right across from Veterans Park. I don't know, John, do you want to give us any more details?
Sure. Jamie, would you mind scrolling down to the last page of that memo? There's a map on there just to kind of walk through really quickly. Basically staff are looking at how do we make this thing look pretty without being a maintenance nightmare for the public works department and, and make it a little bit usable anyway. So once the intersection construction was complete, there was a lot of bad backfill put in there. So we're now gonna have to do some re-grading and put some new soil in. The really nice part is that Fred and his team, including Santino and Mitch, said there's a lot of that labor that he could do. So a lot of the costs you see here are for materials, grass seed, soil, things like that. But our team can do all the grading, which keeps it a lot less expensive than paying all that labor outsourced. They'd also put water to it, basically making it pretty. Then we'd be putting about 30 trees and plants in there. Mitch basically spread it out so that it would be different colors and different blooms at different times of year. We also ran this all by the Parks and Rec Board. They were very helpful in talking this through and making sure it was gonna look good and that they were on board with this plan. Early on in the process, there'd be a lot of discussions about putting signs, like a digital sign or a township logo on a stone wall or something like that. The idea was at this point, let's just get the thing in better shape. If there's a lot of use or desire for something in the future, there's gonna be room to add something like that. For now, we're gonna basically do a beautification that's gonna be low maintenance on the public works department. A big thing that did come out of the Parks and Rec conversations was that if you see on the screen the, the Summietown Pike sidewalk, the side that's on there, has a nice grass strip on it. You can see it's the lighter colored concrete there. It's on the right side of the screen. And then once you get off of Summietown Pike, the rest of the sidewalk was not restored. No grass strip was put in because it was out of the scope of the intersection reconstruction. So the park board was really interested in getting that finished off as well, so that you have a nice new sidewalk with grass strip going all the way around. There would be just a small driveway apron for public works to get their trucks in on the side, all the way to the left there by the PGA side, without all be reconstructed. We've gone out and gotten some quotes for that work and it's actually a lot less expensive than we thought. So it's, it's actually looking like it's pretty reasonable compared to what some early estimates had been for it. So all together, for just under $40,000, we can make this thing look good with a nice new sidewalk around it and get water and trees and plants to it. So that's basically the summary.
Thank you so much, John. Any questions from the board?
No questions, but the only comment that I'll add as well is we, and Mimi and Melinda can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we budgeted more than this for the digital sign alone. And that, that idea sort of got scrapped. I think this is a better use of, of the funding for sure. And then we are still in talks, Kathy Morris and I have met with Clint Ehlers from the Amber Rotary and I haven't had a chance to sit down with him and loop him in on this plan yet, but he had, you know, talked previously about trying to partner with the Rotary. So it's possible they'll want to contribute either now or in the future to more improvements to this space.
I have a couple of comments. First, John, what is the yellow dashed line?
So I should have taken that, that was a holdover for if we had put some kind of wall or sign in there, we were leaving space for where that could fit essentially. So that was just to keep that area back. It also kind of provides a good line for rough planting where we would be off of the street enough to avoid the pen dot salting for days like today where it gets thrown quite a bit so that the new plantings wouldn't be hit by it. So it was kind of a sign placeholder, kind of a distance marker too.
So I, I see you have like 10, no, nine arborvities kind of stuck together. I, I question using arborvitie and crepe myrtle. We've been trying to really emphasize native plantings and I would suggest that you can replace those with something that is native to lower Gwinnett or at least this part of the state and it would be more appropriate. Are you going, are you proposing to put irrigation in the property or you're just gonna run a water line?
So the idea, so first I'll just say that the arborvities were seen as a good choice when Mitch brought them in. Because basically that side of the property is the only side that's really completely open to a parking lot or something like that. So we need something that's gonna be strong enough to be a windbreak and then also give that visual barrier. So I will ask the team to look back and see what other options that are, are native might work for that. You know, he was Um, they, you know, he was expressing that as a preference, so I was passing it on.
Yeah. Well, that, there are many uh, good natives that'll work there. Um, but I, I, you know, I appreciate Mitch putting his input, uh, and coming up with some, a, a nice, a very nice plan. I would just prefer if the township could focus on planting natives, you know, we have our, our tree giveaway and we're a tree city and um, it, you know, planting non-natives is um, is counter to that. And then the last word I will say is, uh, northern red oak are currently undergoing two different blights and every red oak in this area of, uh, in my area anyway, Gwinnett Valley has been, uh, killed. So I would recommend using something in the white oak family, uh, so it won't have to be cut down in ten years from now.
Okay, thank you, and, and I'll just add the comment that to answer your question about watering earlier. Yes, the water line is going to be run to basically the center of the property when we do the grading. And we're going to install a manual sprinkler, sprinkler head so that we don't need any power. But the public works team can just pull that up, let it run for a little while and put it back down, uh, to get the watering circulated on the property.
Well, that sounds great. All right, thank you, John.
All right, thank you for the feedback.
Any additional questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Here.
Don't see anybody online.
Hi, oh, can you hear me?
Uh, I can't see you, but if you just say your name.
Yep, this is Brenda Dahl, um,
I can see you now, go ahead.
Lamp lighter, Lamp lighter Lane, um, I just wanted to echo what Tessie said about planting natives. I looked at that and I thought, oh, do we need to do crepe myrtles? Um, they're lovely, but yeah, it'd be nice to, to really look, we look at all of that, um, you know, show that, let, I'm on EAC and we definitely have some native plant experts that could chime in a little bit. That's all.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? I don't see anyone, I think I went through all the pages. With that, um, the recommendation and, and the plan that's proposed in front of us. Let's give us a total project budget of thirty-nine-five, I'm assuming that is based upon the identified planning, John, I don't want to make assumptions though.
Uh, yes, it is, that, that's correct, um, the planting specifically would be under that line too for the fifteen thousand. Uh, there is some buffer in there, so if we want to swap out some of the plantings, um, I'm sure we can still work within the budget.
Okay. All right, that's what I was going to ask, is the clarification needed from none of Mimi, if, if you were, or if Melinda's the one, can give us an idea of, of how much wiggle room they have to work with?
Uh, we reduced the budget a little bit more than I had originally remembered, we, we started out at a hundred and fifty thousand when it was including the sign. We ultimately wound up with a budget of fifty thousand for this year for these improvements, so there, there is definitely plenty of budget room.
Okay. So, given this recommendation and the idea that we know that they would have to go back and kind of recalculate what the cost of plantings would be and potentially find, um, native planting. I'm going to make a motion to approve, um, or, or I'm going to make a motion to recommend the technical lot work plan with the exception of, um, the incorporation of native plantings, um, as identified by, um, EAC, but also our township kind of planned, up to a maximum of fifty thousand dollars. Is there a second, does anyone want to discuss that or make amend, amend that motion?
This is Jimmy, I can, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so this would be the work plan with the explicit idea that the tactical lot work plan would include native plants. Um, as outlined with a, with a cap of fifty thousand, with a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion approved, thank you so much. Um, next we have the consideration and approval of our invoice report for February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Included in the board packets are invoice and receipts, is there any questions for our finance director?
I, I have one question, um. So there was a large amount of money on the invoice for, uh, I'm assuming it's the Ambler, um, sewer treatment plant? And, uh, am I, am I talking at the right point in time, Danielle?
You are, um, Melinda, I'm thinking, I'm just trying to see if I see Melinda, I see Melinda, okay.
Yeah, can you hear me, yes?
Yep.
Yes, we received that invoice, we had, um, I'm sorry, my dogs are barking, I shouldn't be. We had, um, I think there was a million dollars that was listed for the Ambler project. And, um, we just didn't, with that invoice came in very late, um, for two oh two four, it was all in the fourth quarter, we had only had like two hundred thousand dollars um, in that, uh, amount as an expense before. But that was in there from Ambler for the, the, uh, capital improvements that they do that falls under our sewer operating.
Uh, yeah, thank you for that, I was just wondering if you could at a very high level say what those improvements are, if you know.
So I would have to do some research on that, I know that Ambler gives us a dollar amount of what they're going to be doing capital wise to their treatment plan that we're responsible for. So I would have to get the detail on that unless Mimi would know something that I don't.
This, they were improvements, I do forget exactly what they were replacing now, these were improvements that they were planning a year ago. And I honestly, I don't remember the details of it, Tessie, we can get that for you.
And this is the, this the one that's totaling seven hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred fifty-seven dollars and, and two cents? And it's broken out to two different checks, one is the five oh five four thirty fifty-two for capital projects?
Yes, that's all that was for the capital and the other one was for, was that for treatment?
Yeah, the treatment operations of two ninety-one, one twenty-six fifty, I would, that was one of the questions that I was going to ask as well, is it, is it the it has nothing to do with the filter, or could we assume that it could potentially have something to do with the, with the placement of the filter?
Has absolutely nothing to do with the filter, it's just the sewage treatment plant.
So the capital projects are no improvement to the actual filter quality of the water?
That's part of their water system, it's a totally different system, has nothing to do with it.
I was just hoping.
I know, I'm so sorry, but no, unfortunately.
Okay.
Nope.
Have those filters not been put in place?
Nope, they're still working on the design and permitting for that, to get through DEP.
Holy cow, how many years has that been?
Four, I think.
A long time.
Been about four years.
That, that's really, uh, unfortunate. Um, so, uh, I, I'm sure I've asked this once or twice before, but is Neil our representative to this board and represents our interest, uh, during the voting of the, uh, Ambler Sewers Company?
No, he's not, Fred is the township's representative.
Oh, I'm sorry, so, so.
It's not voting either, so we're not, we don't have a, a seat.
A voting seat.
On their sewer authority.
Man, isn't that, that seems, uh, not right, since we've put a lot of money into it. Um, okay, uh, but, uh, I would ask, um, that somebody on staff give us just a very high level, um, itemize, what is this our money's going toward, uh, at, at some point, not tonight obviously. Um, it, it would be, uh, good to, to understand that, I think, to have some transparency.
You want a formal, you want a formal inquiry to the Am, Ambler for them to reply?
Um, it, it's sure, whatever it takes, a phone call or, you know, an email or.
It'd be easier for us just to get the information and relay it back, that will be faster for you. They, Ambler has a new manager, so I, I wanted to, he just started. Um, I wanted to give him just a little time to get his, his feet under him, but I'm hoping to get a little bit more information from him for what they expect to do this coming year too, we, um, details have been, um, so it's been a little vague for a little while, so I'm hoping that that will change going forward. But we can get the specifics of what's in, more in specifics of what's involved this invoice. That's not hard, but hopefully be able to have some more information for what to expect for this coming year or two and, in the next month or so.
Thank you, I'd appreciate that.
Any additional questions from the board? Thank you, Melinda, thank you, thank you, Mimi.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions from the public?
Nope.
This is, um, let's make a motion to approve the council payable warrant report for text dated February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five for the signed resolution for the invoice total of one million, one hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and eleven cents, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next up is the approval of the minutes, is everyone, all of the board members had its chance to, to review, uh, the minutes from our January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. Any questions or concerns?
None for me.
Any questions or concerns related to the minutes from the public?
Nope.
Danny, see now I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting, um, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you so much. And just as a note, uh, Jimmy Chong, uh, supervisor Chong did abstain.
Thank you.
Um, included in the board packet is our supervisor liaison report, those are for us to review and if there's any questions or concerns, um. No questions or concerns, next up is staff highlights, I don't know if there's any staff comments?
Uh, yes, I do have one update, Danielle.
Okay.
I wanted to give the board a heads up that next week, uh, or actually probably this week, the North Wales Water Authorities can be sending a letter to homeowners. And I need to give a little bit of background for this letter to make sense. Uh, back over the summer, um, we started receiving questions from residents about notices they were getting from the Navy about PFAS or PFOS in their water. Um, I'm not good with pronouncing the full chemical name, but it's essentially the forever chemicals that are linked to a number of harmful medical conditions when they're in your drinking water. Uh, it appears that these wound up in people's private drinking wells as a result of the firefighting foam use at Willow Grove's Naval Air Station over many years. Um, we don't actually have any official role or authority over water in this sense. Um, but we're kind of taking these questions from residents and trying to help them navigate the different authorities and these government agencies that are out there, bringing them this information. Um, it's been a little hard to get info from the Navy at different times, but we do have a report now that says over the last five years or so, they've tested twenty homes that have had levels that are too high according to Pennsylvania DEP standards. And when these levels are too high, the Navy is actually providing bottled water shipments to these residents. Now, all of the houses that are getting these notices so far have been in the corner by Welsh and Tennis. So you can look at Welsh and Tennis and Baker, Landfair, Anisme, Lowell in that area, kind of behind Old York Road Country Club. Now, really, when people have this in their water, the long-term solution is to get them connected to a, a public system like North Wales Water. Um, the trick is, is that that's expensive. So, we've been working with North Wales Water to look at grants that are available. And the, the really positive side in this is there's an organization called Myria that is a, in an authority, uh, established by the state that basically can direct tax money uh, in that area, and they can cover about eighty percent of the costs for the homeowners. Um, now to do that, they need to see that you have test results saying that your levels are too high and then that you can get, you know, the connection covered for that big percentage. Um, part of the problem's been that the Navy hasn't been willing to release the individual addresses that are testing too high. So North Wales, out of their own pocket, has been testing people and hoping that they're going to get a lot of it reimbursed. Uh, they've done twenty-eight homes last I knew, um, and just about all of them had, had pod positive. Um, and what they're doing is they're saying, all right, if you've already tested positive, they're asking if you want to be connected to public water. Um, they're hoping that if they get a bunch of enough people at once, they'll be able to do a bit in bulk and get the price a little bit lower. Um, they sent the first letter, uh, a little while ago, and now anybody that didn't respond is getting this next letter, which is the one I wanted to give you a heads up on to say, hey, do you want to get tested and do you want to be connected, so that's what people are going to see. The part of this that people are going to see is that to get connected, you know, on an average, I'm going to stress that this varies quite a bit. The homeowners, it's, it's going to cost about thirty thousand dollars to get that done. Now, roughly eighty percent of that would get covered by these grants, assuming that they are all done and come through, which we, we believe they probably will. Uh, a portion of that work is done by Myria, essentially, or, sorry, by North Wales Water. Essentially the work, work in the road going up to the person's property line. Then from their property line to their house and closing their well, they have to hire a plumber to do that. And so, when you put this all together, they're going to be eventually out of pocket, on average, again, I stressed, somewhere around six thousand dollars. But because they're going to have to wait for reimbursement in this process, they're going to be out quite a bit, in the range of eighteen to nineteen thousand dollars for probably sixty days or something like that. Um, so I wanted to make you aware, in case you start getting questions from folks that are receiving these letters and what's going on. Um, because people are getting confused whether it's coming something from the Navy in North Wales, um, I fielded a lot of these so far. So in terms of what we're doing right now, um, to keep in the loop on that part too, is North Wales has been documenting which homeowner, homeowners, regardless of anything else, just want to move forward with getting connected right now. And they're starting to make those agreements, which is great, North Wales guys have been on top of this to the best extent they can. Um, they are now looking and we're trying to, to work with them to see if there are any other forms of support, we can, we can help find people in terms of grants or anything like that. Um, looking at, you know, whether it's talking to state representatives, we've reached out to federal representatives, things like that. Um, and we're also keep bugging the Navy to get more details from their testing. Because essentially, we don't need to retest if the Navy already said your level's too high, we can use that for grant funding, or actually, North Wales can use that for, for grant funding, uh, but we need to know the specific ho, uh, homes that, that happen to. Uh, in the end, we don't really have a role in actually funding or connecting any of this stuff because we're not the water authority and we're not the cause of this. Um, so what we're trying to do is essentially identify supports, help people navigate the bureaucracy. Because I think, uh, you know, everybody on this side of, you know, of not being in the Navy right now agrees this was not the homeowner's fault, it was not the township's fault, it was not North Wales Water Authority's fault. Um, but we now have to deal with the situations that people have safe drinking water. Um, so I'm happy to answer questions, uh, but that's the stuff that may be coming up more frequently with questions in the near future.
Um, can you just give us an idea of like how many, we'll say households or homes we feel maybe affected that haven't communicated back one way or the other, if they're going to connect?
We identified about ninety private wells in that area, it was, I want to say it was exactly eighty-eight if I remember correctly. Um, so we know that about thirty-one have requested testing. So I think there could be as many as roughly fifty more or so, fifty to sixty more.
Do we, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, you're good.
Uh, do we, should we put, uh, uh, some type of notice on our website saying, hey, Navy's testing, there's positives and maybe you want to get your water tested? Um, just so our residents know, just to, to, just to test, just in case?
It, it's, it's a fine line to walk on that one, because yes, I agree that, that's a good message. I worry about us being seen as a de facto water authority in this case, because we're not, and, and we don't have that drinking water information. Um, I don't know, I, I mean, I could also talk to, you know, bring Mimi into this conversation and also say, you know, maybe work with North Wales to see what kind of messaging they would like to try to get out to folks. Um, because I think that in terms of assisting with the messaging, we certainly have been doing that in terms of we're telling the people that are calling, for sure.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, maybe if we can assist with getting, getting the messages out saying, we're passing, you know, message through North Wales, this is what they've been seeing. But I think, um, it may be something we should do just to, to put people on notice if they're in the know.
Yeah, one of the other complicating factors here is this is only for homes that have well water. So like, I, I get a little concerned for just a blanket statement that people who are on public water would then be inundating either North Wales or Ambler water, the other complication is we have two water companies and they're going in. Um, it, because the, the water authority has been very cooperative and they are putting out money that the Navy should be doing. Um, so I don't want to kind of abuse their, their, their helpfulness here by all of a sudden they have a ton of people who do not need to have their water tested because they're on public water. So it's, you know, it's, it, we, we've been wrestling with this a little bit of, because it just, as you just So it's, you know, we've been wrestling with this a little bit of, because it just, as you just heard, there's not, you know, John had to go through all of that explanation, because it's not a simple situation.
Yeah, and I understand, maybe, and you know best, but, you know, just say, you know, for well, well water users only, or something like that. But yeah, you know, I just would just throw it out just for discussion.
I think Jimmy makes a good point, because this is a time-sensitive situation. It looks like the homeowners only have a certain amount of time, and then once it's done, it's, you know, the army or the Navy, I guess. Somebody says that's the only chance you get, so six months from now, a year, somebody might say they weren't aware of what was going on. I don't know, but it it might be useful to communicate to the particular homeowners that have wells.
Yeah, and I'll stress that if somebody in six months after this all went on said, I still wanna connect, they still could connect to North Wales Water. The question would be, is if the grants from Myria and any other place that's found would still be viable options? Essentially, it could make the cost go up, would be the big downside.
Any additional questions?
We'll try to figure out some wording and some ways to get, calling attention to this a little bit more. So mostly just encouraging people, read your mail. Get a letter from North Wales Water Authority, read that letter.
Yeah.
So it's not junk mail. Maybe something like that, we could try to figure out how to promote that.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Any additional staff updates?
I just have one, just a heads up, that we have our our shredding and our electronics recycling day scheduled for, it's a little later this year, just because that was what was available. So it'll be Saturday, June seventh, from eight till eleven.
Anyone else? Hey, Supervisor comments, Tessie?
Well, of course, I'm tickled to death about the Super Bowl outcome, and it was so exciting to watch, and I was hoping for a blowout, and it happened, so that was great. Everybody take care with the weather. Seems like we might get a little bit of slippery roads. And other than that, happy February.
Go Birds.
Jimmy?
Go Birds, and we have a school's two-hour delay tomorrow, so guys, be safe.
I wanna highlight a new and delicious business in the township. Chewy's opened up where Rich's other place was. I had an opportunity to visit on Saturday, and the food is outstanding. If you like barbecue and comfort food, this place is legit. They're open Wednesdays from four to eight, Wednesday through Saturday, four to eight, at least for now, but it's really good. Support our local businesses.
What's the business name again?
Chewy's.
Chewy's, okay.
Right on Bethland Pike, across from the post office.
Awesome.
I hope to see Chewy's soon. I've seen pictures. I got good reviews from others, so I'm excited. It's not breakfast, but I'm gonna be happy about that. But more importantly, I'm ecstatic that we are the Super Bowl champions. I just wanna highlight that, but I also wanna highlight our Public Works, who I know are getting ready to already done salting and brinding, and are probably gonna get ready to plow some snow for us, so I'm gonna thank them for all the hard work that they're about to embark upon. Hope everyone remains safe, and that it isn't a significant, and it isn't too significant of a storm. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Yay.
Take care, guys. Anyone wanna meet me over at Chewy's sometime next week or so?
I think it sounds like a great idea, Jimmy.
All right, I'll shoot a text. Let's all go, seriously. On me.
See ya.
Good luck, everyone.